We're going to try to get to this meeting as soon as possible so that before we lose a quorum or any of the individuals that need to report out. So, good evening. The Jackson Public School Board meeting is now called order. Board members, we have five, well, six members present, so therefore we have a quorum. We've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll move.
Second. Dr. Harrison has moved and Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is the approving of the minutes. Board members, we've had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 2nd?
I still move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. And now, Dr. Green, we're up for the superintendent's report.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening, board members, President Johnson, board members, all of the JPS team members and community members who have joined us. We'll begin, as we typically do, with a highlights reel from our instructional television production team.
National PTA awarded Obama Magnet PTA with a $2,500 grant. The donation will help the school to continue their efforts to meet critical needs of scholars, families, and teachers in their community due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The funding is made possible by TikTok, a video-sharing social networking service. In addition to their recent donation, National PTA awarded Obama Magnet PTA $5,000 in 2020. Those funds were also given to assist the school in their COVID-19 efforts. During the week of February 8th through the 12th, school districts from across the state celebrated local school board members during National School Board Recognition Week. But the celebration, honor, and recognition of our local members did not end there. Thank you, Jackson Public Schools Board of Trustees, as we continue to applaud you for your commitment to excellence, the JPS community, your dedication to our scholars, parents, and fam- The school board members are Attorney Letitia Johnson, President, Dr. Edward Sevac Jr., Vice President, Ms. Barbara Hilliard, Secretary, the members are Mr. Frank Figures, Dr. Robert Luckett, Dr. Jean Hairston, and Mrs. Cynthia Thompson. Please visit our website to read more information about these outstanding leaders. Jim Hill teacher Corian Paget was named Teacher of the Year by the Best of Mississippi Awards 2020. The Best of Mississippi Awards raises funds for the organization's foundation arm. Their mission is to provide resources to Black-owned businesses in urban areas around the world. Congratulations, Mr. Paget. In an effort to constantly adapt to the ever-changing needs and best support the JPS school community, the district is asking you to take a five-minute survey during the month of February. Since transitioning to in-person learning, the district is specifically interested in understanding your current experiences. To participate in the survey, please visit our website and click the link under "We want to hear from you. Share your feedback with JPS." Again, the survey takes only five minutes. The district's official mobile app is now available. Get access to news, the district's directory, and much more. Download it on Google Play and the Apple App Store. Search for Jackson Public Schools MS. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools and on Twitter at JPS District. You can also watch all JPS programming on our YouTube channel at JPS ITV and on Comcast Channels 18 and 19.
Thank you to the team. I just appreciate your continued work to provide those updates to us. And I just want to say a word about the time that we're in. Huge thanks to all the team members who helped to bring this board meeting together tonight. Many folks working in foreign spaces, displaced from home or what have you, working from phones and cars and just all of that. So, just want to thank you as well, of course, to all of our JPS team members this week who have just gone far above and beyond the call of duty to try to make this week work. As I have said previously, and I think it's not lost on this body here, we exist to educate children. That's why we exist. And so, obviously, or at least obvious to me, we are making every effort to make sure that that happens. Well, you know, at some point, we have to acknowledge, as one of our board members mentioned in a message earlier this week, we've got to acknowledge the things that we simply can't change and adjust to that. But I do just want to give a heartfelt thanks to our entire Jackson Public Schools district, every team member, to our teachers and other school-based team members, all of the operations folks, all of the campus enforcement folks who've been out on streets and moving around the district to observe our buildings and check in their operations, custodial facilities teams, our technology teams, all of the leadership teams, and on and on, all of the folks throughout the district who have done everything that they could to ensure that those things that we could do during this unprecedented week of challenges with our weather and infrastructures and water and power, that we just thank you. And we know that this didn't, this wasn't an easy week. And for many people, it was darn hard, and as people have suffered and dealt with their own individual challenges. And so, board members, I just wanted to lift that up and really acknowledge all of the great work that people did, and many of them just frustrated that they couldn't do even more because of the way their, you know, their hearts and the things that they want to do for children and families, just understanding the challenges that we've been under. One of the things that we have added as an emergency item, and let me pause here. I believe we've got some folks who are not muted, so let's please make sure everyone's muted. Thank you. We know that there were challenges with, you know, some of our teachers and several other staff members, some of our school leaders and central office folks as well, who didn't have power, didn't have connectivity in that. And so, they weren't able to engage in ways that they typically would in the work. And so, we're bringing an item to you, board members, as an emergency item, and I'll talk about it in a few minutes, but just want to tee that up as connected to my thanks to all of our team members. But just so you know, that'll be something that we'll discuss in just a few minutes, a request for your approval for emergency acknowledgement and administratively for team members. As was mentioned in the highlights reel, the Jackson Public School District joined districts across the state and the country thanking school board members during the School Board Member Recognition Week, which was held this past week, February 8th through the 12th, 2021, for their leadership and service and their hearts and commitment and just all of that to the local school district and to the community that we serve. The state of Mississippi celebrated School Board Member Recognition Week this past week, and unfortunately, we weren't able to meet as a board in our regular meeting. So, I would like to take this moment to express my gratitude for the hard work of our school board members and to thank them and thank all of you for your dedication, again, to our community and our scholars and their families. And to name our board members again, because I don't think we can ever do enough of this, our President, Letitia Johnson, Vice President, Dr. Sevac, our Board Secretary, Barbara Hilliard, and all of our other board members, Frank Figures, Dr. Robert Luckett, Dr. Jean Hairston, and Mrs. Cynthia Thompson. You all remain, you have to be, some of the hardest-working board members, bringing all of your heart, all of your dedication, your smarts and skills to support this district in governing in a way that addresses the needs of the district, but also recognizes the need to partner with the leadership here and as well other community members. So, I can't say enough, but I do want to thank you personally and, of course, on the behalf of the Jackson Public School District. As you know, it is still February, in spite of all that's been happening in the weather and just challenges that folks are dealing with. It is still February and Black History Month, and so, Jackson Public Schools continues to celebrate the culture and achievements made by African-Americans all month long. This evening, we paused to celebrate Jackson native, Mr. Hezekiah Watkins. Mr. Watkins, a civil rights activist, became the youngest Freedom Rider nearly 60 years ago and almost lost his life in the pursuit of equality. He was a graduate of Lanier High School, let me get that right, Lanier High School. He joined the civil rights movement in 1961, and at the age, and at that time, he was the age of 13. As a member of the Freedom Riders here in Jackson, he demonstrated against state segregation laws, and for doing so, he and 328 others were arrested and charged with breach of peace. At the age of 13 years old, folks, Watkins was put on death row until days later when Governor Ross Barnett ordered his release. Mr. Watkins continued his involvement in Mississippi's fight for civil rights and justice, which resulted in more than 100 arrests for him. These experiences strengthened his commitment to improving the quality of life and opportunities for young African-Americans and youth of all, across the board, in all mankind, actually. Concurrently, at the age of 73 years old, Mr. Watkins is an employee at the Mississippi Civil Rights Museum, where he can be found almost every day, giving tours and sharing the stories of his past. Mr. Watkins, we celebrate you as a homegrown historical figure who has helped to change the world, literally helped to change the world. Please join us as we continue to honor and celebrate the achievements of other African-Americans all month long by visiting the JPS Facebook page for more Black History facts. And with that, President Johnson, members of the board, that concludes my announcements and my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And also, on behalf of the board, thank you for the recognition and all of your kind words about myself and fellow board members. I want to give board members an option, some time to respond if they'd like. Okay. Also, I wanted to also say, I found as a parent, the district's response to this weather disaster, I felt fully informed. And even as decisions were changed on a daily basis, I felt like I had a heads-up. As a parent, this week went really, really well. And I really want to thank you, Dr. Green, and of course, your team. So, on behalf of parents, thank you.
I believe Dr. Hairston had a word.
Okay, Dr. Hairston? Thank you so much, Dr. Green. Not absolutely, really, because, you know, I can go on too long, and it's a night that we don't need to be here all night. I just do want to say, as a board member, that we appreciate you, sir, and the leadership team you've brought together and the spirit that you have lifted so many of us up even in hard times. And so, the board appreciates our working through. Seems like we've only had tough times since you came, but hey, that's what we're here for, to get through these tough times, because JPS is the best school district ever. I'm done. Thank you.
We got stories to tell.
Yeah.
I'd love to jump into, just say thank you for the recognition. I'm proud to be affiliated with the district, both as a parent and on this board, and appreciate all the effort that went into the swag bag as well. It was great to go through it, and I look forward, I'm actually sporting my JPS tie right now. So, again, thank you all for putting that together, and it's a privilege to be able to serve in this capacity.
I, too, would like to say thanks very much for remembering us and, of course, working on this board. Yes, it is a lot of work, but it's the kind of work where we do feel that it is important that we work to make a difference in the lives of young people. As you said earlier, we are here for the students, and that, of course, is our mission, is to do all that we can do to ensure that students are successful. And I speak as a board member, but I also speak as a grandparent. Thank you.
Any other board members? If not, we will move on to public participation. We do not have anyone that wants to participate, so community members who would like to make public comments should email their requests to Ross Williams, that's R-O-S Williams, at jackson.k12.ms.us, no later than 5:15 PM, or log into the Zoom meeting between 5:00 and 5:15 to indicate their desire to comment. Now, board members, we are going to move right along. We're at information items only. Board, do we have any board reports tonight?
Yes, Ms. Johnson, one quick just update from the Finance Committee. We did meet on January 28th, and one of the outcomes of that meeting was that it would be good to have a board work session around the budget. So, we will be meeting next week to discuss, you know, the big elements of putting the budget together for next year, projected revenues, projected expenses, budget priorities. And so, again, board members, I'm looking forward to seeing y'all there and getting into the nuts and bolts of the finances. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Sevac. Any other reports, board members? If not, we are moving on to Dr. Salgado.
And board members, as Dr. Salgado prepares for the presentation here, just want to give a heads-up, as President Johnson has already mentioned, we're attempting to kind of truncate some of our comments this evening. So, obviously, if you have questions, please do ask those, but you'll likely see from starting with the presentation here and other items that we'll be speaking to, we'll likely kind of limit our comments just to kind of move through that as folks are working through connectivity and power issues.
Good evening, President Johnson, members of the board, superintendent, and all the JPS families. An honor for me to present where we are in our Benchmark 2 data. If you could please move to the next slide. Our diset analysis, you will see very quickly how it connects to our mission and vision and to our values. If we could please move. You, specifically, you will see how it connects to the actions we are taking currently to support our students and what we have planned for next year to achieve all the elements of our mission and vision. Specifically, today, we're going to review- You're muted, sir. Well, I'm so sorry. The present, the objectives of this presentation is to review and discuss the results on Benchmark Data 2 and our strengths and opportunities for growth, and the current actions that we're taking and the ones we are planning for next year. Our calendar administration, Benchmark 2 was given to students between December 14th and 18th, and it was online, and you can see that next one will be in March 12th, also online. If we could please move. Okay. You will see our data on 3rd to 8th grade in ELA and Mathematics, 5th to 8th grade in Science, and at the high school level, test Algebra 1, English 2, US History, and Biology 1. At the elementary level, thank you. Next slide. We have color-coded a comparison between Benchmark 1 of 2021 with Benchmark 2. Yellow means that we remain at the same level, red is we went down, and green is where we increased. As you can see, we had increments in the 5th grade ELA and 3rd grade Mathematics. However, we, the 4th grade and 5th grade math, as well as in the 4th grade ELA, we have taken some steps down. As you can see, there are three to four points, percentage points, in our proficiency. If we look at, next one, please. If we look at our data longitudinally and we look at how students in the 3rd grade performed in 1920 in comparison to 2021, we see also that, and we assume and we know it's probably because of the pandemic, our scores took a dive in comparison from year to year, even though we increased from Benchmark 1 to Benchmark 2 from previous year, we took a slight dive because of the pandemic. At the middle school level, thank you, we see that our scores also in the same color coding, that we remained the same in 1, in the 6th and 7th grade math and ELA, we took a four-point dive in each one of them, and we took, from the 7th grade math, our scores went down, went up, sorry, for two points in the 8th grade, you know, two points, and increase in 8th grade ELA and 8th grade Science. However, when we look again at the next slide longitudinally and we look at the comparison from last year, we also see that we have taken, you know, a small dive between 1920 and 2021, specifically in ELA and Mathematics, in the 6th and 7th grade. Thank you. At the high school level, we see here that our percent of proficient has increased in all of the areas at the high school level. So, moving from, you know, in 2021, Benchmark 1 from 9 to 16, 22 to 28, 21 to 32, 24 to 32. And also, we have increased in our participation rate. As you can see, we're very close to reaching our goals for year 2 of 2021. In the next slide, we see the comparison, that we remain at the same level in Algebra 1, Biology 1, English 2, we took a very high increase and a very slight increase in that category that is in red. Thank you. We have identified as a team our areas of strength. I am not going to read all of them, but in English Language Arts, our students are very good at understanding vocabulary. But when it comes to our students trying to compare and construct, infer, or determine the point of view of an author, and what I'm trying to signal is when it comes to really higher-order thinking skills, our students don't do as well in English Language Arts. The same is true in the next one, please. In Mathematics, students are very fluent in operations, but when it comes to explaining or reasoning or being able to create problems that are word problems or two-step problems, our students have a harder time if they have to themselves decide which operation they need to be able to use in order to solve a word problem. In Algebra 2, at the middle school, the students, again, are very good at solving equations for algebra, and at the high school level, they are able to see the relationship between two quantities, quantities, I'm sorry, in a function. But when it comes to interpret what it means, and when it comes to creating questions by themselves, our students don't do as well. Those are the standards that we have identified that we are going to focus now and in the future. In our next one, in Science and Biology, students can communicate technical informations, use scientific evidence, and, you know, even develop and use models. But when it comes to investigate and determine how different variables affect a phenomena or using data to make decisions or evaluate, again, those higher-order thinking skills, our students have a harder time getting to that level of understanding of the material and of the test. And the next one, please. So, the same in US History, they know, you know, they're quite versed in the history, but when it comes to making an interpretation, when it comes to defining, if I have this information and this other piece of information, what does that mean? To make that level of inference, our students have a harder time. The same thing, and again, you see the compare and contrast when it comes to different historical events. In our next slide, I'm going to explain about what we're doing. As you know, we have our FIT meetings, our Focus Instructional Team meetings, where data is analyzed, and we focus where the students have missed something and what is the reason. There is a lot of study of the standard and also the implementation of, you know, the multi-tier system of support and using several models of assessment, formative assessments throughout the time the students are there, start, and other ones to understand where students are, where they need more support. We're also using scaffolding documents to ensure that the students, you know, have the skills that are required to access and provide those skills to students and be able to really clearly define what a student needs to know at each grade level. Those are our current practices. Also, we have create, we create 3rd grade success plans, which provides a comprehensive support to students at the 3rd grade, especially in ELA and Mathematics. We also focus on high-leverage standards at this grade level with several professional learning sessions, and we track each student to prioritize what they need to do in order to succeed. Again, the next slide. What we are trying now for the future, we are taking a comprehensive approach. Our team has defined that in order to get to those higher-order level thinkings, we are implementing an inquiry-based instructional model. We are integrating technology, not just for the use of platforms, but technology for learning. We have implemented curriculum that is culturally relevant to students and also socially emotional strategies in- We have implemented curriculum that is culturally relevant to students and also socially emotional strategies in every classroom. We have started a process of really truly unpacking what a standard means and what is it that is being actually evaluated. And we have implemented a protocol to ensure that the PD is making it all the way to the classroom, that feedback is aligned, that the support is aligned, and my team has worked very hard on aligning all of those elements. And we're also improving our core curriculum. We want to bridge that gap between what teachers are teaching and what the standard actually requires. And we are conducting a curriculum audit. We are looking at the amount of writing and reading that each student does every single day with the the idea of creating a really strong reading and writing program across the district. And we also looking at, you know, how much students are actually spending in the science of reading in the early grades, specifically for NIMEN Awareness, phonemics, closed reading in order to strengthen students' reading and writing at the very elementary grades. Next step, next six slide, I have comments and questions. I'm sorry, I was sparking too fast, but you know, we, our time is now more restricted. I am happy to entertain questions and our comments.
Thank you, Dr. Salgado. Board members, any questions or comments?
If you don't mind before questions, can I just add, you know, thank you, Juan, Dr. Salgado and team members who who developed this presentation. Board members, you you have a copy of this, and so I believe you've already taken a look at it. You know, if you have further questions later, obviously tonight, we're happy to to address those. Just want to lift up, though, just so that it's not missed, that there are a lot of really good stories in this data. We're obviously concerned about the fact that we're off pace from from the the movement and the forward progression that we we had planned and obviously wanted to see in our earlier grades. There are lots of positive, there are lots of positive stories.
Please mute your phones.
Ms. Williams, if you would, just kind of monitor and help people to remain on mute. There are lots of, I was saying, there are lots of positive stories in in the data, and especially with our upper grades, eighth grade Algebra, Algebra and high school, high school in general, the subject areas in English Two and and the sciences and that, lots of really good positive stories. And just to front load a bit of that, as we looked at that and reflected on why that might be why they're outpacing the lower grades with performance, we definitely saw, one, many of them had devices when our younger scholars did not. And so their learning online and virtually last spring over the summer to some degree, and certainly in the fall of this year, they were more, more of them were connected than many of our younger scholars and and just their ability to work independently, we believe also impacted their, you know, the pace, pace and rate of their improvements. Obviously, and our teachers are just working super hard to backfill a lot of the the content and and skills to be developed there. But because of those connectivity and their ability to, those issues of connectivity and their ability to work independently, we believe that there's some that helped to hasten their their growth. I'll pause there and just see what questions or reactions folks have.
The only thing I want to say, Dr. Green and Dr. Salgado, thank you so much for that very informative presentation. And you said everything else, Dr. Green, you put it all in context. So thank you both, the team and all our teachers and staff who are out there in the trenches doing this good work.
Absolutely, our teachers and and curriculum folks from downtown, our school leaders, interventionists, folks all, and parents, of course. Our first teachers.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Any other comments, board members? If not, then we're back at Dr. Salgado.
Thank you. I am members of the board. I am presenting here an agreement for experiential education between Jackson Public Schools and University of Southern Mississippi College of Education and Human Sciences, School of Child and Family Sciences. We are allowing students to come and do their practicum and experience, field experience at our schools. As I have stated in the past, this is a benefit for the districts as we increase our pool of future teachers. But also, we are showcasing the many wonderful and creative teachers that we have. And they will be joining regardless of whether it's students present or virtual, they will be placed in our schools to learn from our teachers, but most importantly, to support also the learning that is going in each classrooms. And I am asking for, you know, your acceptance of this memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Salgado. Board members, are there any questions on this item, questions or comments? If not, thank you, Salgado, and we will move on to Mr. Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, I would like to present to the board a, an agreement with a company called Real Life TV, which is a live streaming platform for athletic programs as well as any other events that we choose to do so. This, this platform will create other viewing opportunities for people across the country as well as those that choose to attend athletic events in person. There also a, a, a piece where we can create revenue for our athletic department. We can sell advertisement on this platform, and we can also sell a, a, a membership on this platform. There is a, a fee to watch the live stream of events across the district, and there's no cost to the district. All costs will be to those who choose to purchase this platform to watch our athletic events or any other programs across the district. The cost, like I said, it's a cost to the district is is nothing but the, the streaming service costs two ninety-nine per month and the, we sell the subscription for five dollars, which is seven ninety-nine for those who choose to participate with this service, seven ninety-nine per month. Five dollars will go to the district, two ninety-nine will go to Real Life TV. That's the gist of it. I'm open for any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Doesn't, it doesn't appear to be. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Now we are back to you again, Dr. Green, for information action item A.
Thank you, President Johnson. And just another word on that, that contract that Mr. Jones just presented. I'm excited that we're moving into a space where we can use the technology to bring our, our games to, you know, to a wider audience. We, we worked hard trying to get this presented and or get the contract and whatnot cleared and presented to you as quickly as possible. We know that families have struggled not being able to see their youngsters playing, but we're excited that we're moving in this direction and that we'll be able to use it far beyond even the the COVID pandemic. So with regard to this item, board members, bringing to you this evening a request in accordance with board policy AFA or EBAA. The administration is requesting the Board of Trustees to approve administrative, this administrative leave with pay for all JPS employees during this extreme weather event that we've experienced this week from February the fifteenth through tomorrow, the nineteenth. We will be communicating or have communicated to to the community that we will be closed again tomorrow due to weather and power outages and water and on and on. And that's both at several of our schools and in many team members and 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 our children's homes and some of yours, as I understand it. Just wanted to name that we, we did in fact attempt on, on Monday and yesterday, Wednesday, to run the district virtually. But we, it just became abundantly clear that we simply didn't have all of the resources that we needed to do it in the fashion that would meet the needs that we were trying to meet of our scholars. As I mentioned earlier, you know, we exist to educate children, and so we're going to do all we can to, to, to try to meet those needs. But at some point, we simply have to acknowledge that we just don't, we're not set up for success in that. And so we've been working internally, we've been talking with some of our peers in other districts in neighboring communities and districts, just to understand how they've dealt with the closure and with an effort to try to provide some online or virtual instruction to scholars at the same time. What we, we have officially, we closed the district on Tuesday and today. And we closed schools. In effect, we closed schools on Monday and Wednesday, and we'll close officially again tomorrow. So across the board, in effect, we've been closed. And while we've again attempted to serve virtually, we, we know that we simply could not. It's for that reason and because, you know, for no fault of their own, many individuals because of the work that they do in the district or because their homes were without power or connectivity and other devices that they needed to support us, we are requesting your approval to provide administrative leave with pay for our employees through the entire week. I'll pause there and take any questions that you might have for us.
Board members, any questions?
I just have two clarifying questions, President Johnson. The first is, so will, does this mean every employee of the district will receive leave without pay? Excuse me, leave with pay, they'll effectively, there will be no break in in pay for this week?
Exactly, yes.
And and my second question is, will the, do, they, they will be able to get paid without taking any personal days? Is this in a, so that's my other question.
Right, no, we, we would be providing them with administrative leave with pay in, in lieu of them having to take personal leave days.
Okay, thank you.
And to your question, that was the original thinking that we would, you know, you know, ask team members to take leave. But as we looked at the policies, as we, and we, obviously, we got feedback from members of the team. But as we looked again at the policies and the statutes, as we looked at how other districts are, are are interpreting policies and the flexibilities there. And again, the our policy and the statutes didn't really contemplate closing and still working virtually or closing school buildings, trying to work virtually, and then employees not being able to work virtually because they don't have power, because they have water issues. So it's in the context of all of that that we were looking at and interpreting our policy and the statutes to allow for this level of flexibility. And again, in keeping with other districts in the state. And so we obviously want to support our, our team members as much as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? If not, is there a motion to approve of information action item A?
Madam President, I move the approval of information item A.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved and Dr. Harrison has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you, Dr. Green.
Absolutely. Thank you, board members. And I'll just acknowledge that we've got members of our, our team, teachers and as well as the JFT on the line. And so acknowledging their presence tonight.
All right, Dr. Knoll.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Green, President Johnson, and members of the board. The administration is seeking approval of compensation for the employees who serve as mentors in the Mississippi Teacher Residency Pilot Program, which is funded through the KELOP grant by the Mississippi Department of Education. Our Mississippi Teacher Residency is a teacher pipeline building program that we partnered in with the Mississippi Department of Education, where we basically support employees to receive either a bachelor's degree in education or a master's degree in education. And a part of that program is that they receive support from mentors throughout their initial years in their residency year, which is a two-year program. And so the, the mentors have been working in this second cohort, or the second year of the program, rather, since the beginning of the school year. But the funding from MDE was just received on February the second, twenty twenty-one, and they received their payment in two installments, one in, supposed to be in the fall, and then the second at the end of the spring semester. So we are seeking for approval to pay these employees from the funds that have now been distributed from MDE.
Thank you, Dr. Knoll. Board members, are there any questions or comments? If there are no questions or comments, is there a motion to approve information action item B?
So move.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you again, Dr. Knoll. Ms. Miller.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson, Dr. Green, members of the board. I present to you for approval tonight, the monthly financial report for the month ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Of course, this report contains your statement of fund balance, your budget status report, the bank reconciliation report, and also your district maintenance cash flow report. I wanted to bring your attention just very quickly to the cash flow report, which is the last page of the document. Just as a note, you may have noticed under January, there's a negative two point five million dollars under Avalorm collections. That does not mean that we didn't receive, that we didn't receive enough money in Avalorm collections this month. Actually, what that does is how it actually shows how we book the payment of the charter school payment. If you recall, the charter school payment is due to all the schools by January sixteenth of every year. So in prior years, the Avalorm collections for district maintenance have been sufficient enough to cover that charter school payment, basically as far as the book is concerned, as far as the, the books are concerned. So for example, last year in January of twenty twenty, we received thirteen point two million dollars. And when we made the payment of five point five million dollars, we had a balance of seven point seven million dollars. This year, however, the January payment for, the January receipts for Avalorm was only four point five million dollars. We made the seven million dollar payment to the charter schools, which left that negative two point five. That does not mean that we went, we didn't have the cash to pay for it. That is just how we book it according to, of course, cash, cash management processes when we have to book actual cash receipts and dispersments. So there was, there's, if you will, did still notice, though, at the bottom of the report, the ending cash balance at the end of January was two point six million dollars. So there was sufficient cash to cover it. It's just how we have to show it in the accounting records that right against the
Oh, man. Oh, no, oh, no.
Please mute your phone.
Oh, my God.
But we, but we did have some. But we, but we did have sufficient cash. And I'm sure all of you are, are, have been a part of your, your school board member training that talks about the cash balance and the making sure that you have a positive cash balance. If you will look at the very last line under projection of June, we are projected to have a positive cash balance at the end of, at the end of the school year, which is where we are required to do. So again, although it showed a negative $2.5 million in Avalon Collections on the accounting side of it, there was still a positive cash flow for the month of January. I'll stop there for any questions.
Board members, are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve action item C? Information action item C.
Still moved.
I still move.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't get who moved. Dr. Harrison?
This is Ms. Hilliard.
Hilliard has moved. Dr. Seback has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you. Ms. Miller? And now we have Dr. Cormac.
Good evening, Board President Johnson, to Dr. Green and other members of the board. This evening I bring before you the request to approve a lease agreement, rental agreement for use of the Faulkner Hotel as a space for two upcoming retreats that have been planned for our data and accountability team and our senior leadership team. We believe that the selection of a venue where we can socially distance but also have in-depth conversations, both about the conclusion of this school year and planning into the future, is really vital. And so would encourage your support for this rental agreement for two retreats in the month of March.
Thank you, Dr. Cormac. Board members, are there any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve information action item D?
I still move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you, Dr. Cormac. Oh, Dr. Cormac, you're up again.
Thank you. Our next item is the approval of a memorandum of understanding between Mississippi First and Jackson Public Schools. Essentially, this memorandum of understanding would solidify the district's participation in a communication study related to district-level communications during the COVID-19 pandemic. They, Mississippi First organization is looking to profile district-related communications and to build a toolkit supportive of districts' strategies and other communication efforts, both during the pandemic and in other emergency situations. So we're excited to have been reached out to be a part of that, that toolkit and a part of this study. And we'll share resources that was requested by Dr. Seback with them about the work of the Mississippi School Board Association to be included in the toolkit. But we believe this is a unique opportunity to be a part of and would encourage your support.
Thank you, Dr. Cormac. Board members, are there any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve information action item E?
Still moved.
Second.
Dr. Seback has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you, Dr. Cormac. Next, board members, we have the consent agenda items finance. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If no further questions, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda finance?
Still moved.
Second.
Dr. Seback has moved and Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda items general. All of the consent agenda items general have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items general?
Madam President, I move to approve the, all of the consent agenda items general.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. Dr. Harrison has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, board members, we have the consent agenda items personnel, of course. As with the other consent agenda items, we've had an opportunity to review these items previously. Are there any other questions of the administration? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items personnel?
I still move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Is there consideration to hold an executive session? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I second.
Dr. Harrison has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, this motion is approved and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, board members.
Thank you, team. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.